Good evening and welcome. Tonight's debate, we're going to start with the school committee. And I'm going to ask each to give a two-minute opening statement. It'll be followed by some questions. So, in the number one slot, if you please stand, state your name.
So, the question was, if I stand, will you still be able to hear me?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Great. Good question.
Hello, everyone. My name is Samantha Verga Watson. I am a proud resident of Magnolia as of last year. So, a newer resident, but happy to be here. I'm a Gloucester High School graduate. I graduated in 2004. I'm a social worker and I'm a parent of two young girls who are not in the system yet. I have a four-year-old and an eighteen-month-old. Most of my work as a social worker has been within this community, both at Pathways and at Children's Friend and Family in Gloucester as an in-home family therapist. So, I'm very familiar with the needs of the youth in this community and the needs of their families, particularly the high-needs community that is highly represented in our school district. I'm happy to be here and I look forward to answering more questions. Thank you.
Hi there. So, I'm Laura Wiesen. Happy to be standing on this stage. My daughters both went to preschool here in Magnolia at Shanna. So, this is the very first time I've been here, but I've watched them here. My family moved here eight years ago. I have two young daughters. The oldest is now in first grade at Beeman and the other is still at Shanna Montessori School. And I'm running for school committee as a parent and as someone who believes deeply in the value of our public schools. As someone new to this community, eight years I know is brand-new, I've learned about all the great things happening in this community by speaking to people, by speaking to my neighbors, speaking to friends, speaking to other parents. And I've come to understand just how much good there is in our schools. But that's not what I heard when I moved here. I would hear negativity. And then, as I was entering the school system with my daughter, I decided to research it and I've seen all the good things. So, I come from this, I come to this with a twenty-year background as a communications professional. I was a television news and documentary producer and researcher. And I'm eager to work with the team of the school committee to really improve our, both our educational outcomes, but also how we communicate about those outcomes within our community and then beyond. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joel Favaza. Please excuse my voice. As I'll tell you in a minute, I have two small children and, you know, surprise, surprise, I'm a little sick today. I am a local business owner. I am a real estate attorney with a firm on Main Street. I am a resident of Gloucester. I was born on the island thirty-four years ago and I've been here ever since. I'm married to a middle school teacher who teaches out of district. And as I mentioned, I am the father of three young children who will be entering the district. I'm also the guardian for a senior at the Gloucester High School. So, I find it coincidental that I'm seated at random in the middle of this table tonight because, as I look at my candidacy, I find myself uniquely positioned in that I am the only candidate here that has both experience on this school committee. I have served two terms and I'm looking for a third. But also, to have young children who are entering the district. Although all families and all households are impacted by many of the decisions that we make on the school committee, there's a personal touch at my household for the decisions that we'll make in the upcoming term. And so, I thank you all for coming out tonight. I hope I can earn your vote. And I'm certainly happy to speak with any of you after the meeting if you have any particular questions about me or my ideas tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Clancy. I have, I'm finishing my fifth term on the school committee. And it seemed like yesterday that my son was entering kindergarten and I ran for school committee the first time. And I've had a tremendous experience being on the school committee to see a lot of really great things happening in our schools, a lot of improvement really down to the core at the elementary level in terms of literacy and math. And there's still many challenges for us and there's still many opportunities for us to pursue. A little bit about myself, I have lived here for twenty-five years, still, certainly still getting to know a lot of people. I have a son who is now a sophomore at Gloucester High School and I couldn't be prouder and happier for the education he's had and the teachers he's been able to interact with. My passion for education is not just with the Gloucester Education, with the school committee, but I've been involved in the Gloucester Education Foundation since my son was three. And if you're familiar with the Education Foundation, we've brought more than $7 million to Gloucester schools in terms of innovative programs and opportunities and professional development. So, I work a lot of my time, my discretionary time as a volunteer, helping in many ways on the Gloucester Education Foundation because it connects the community to our schools. So, I think that that's an important piece that people should know, that our schools are uniquely benefited by our community and that connection. My background is in finance. I feel like I bring a prudent approach to everything financial that we deal with and including setting priorities with limited resources. We know, we all have wish lists in our personal lives and in our businesses and in our community, but we can't fund them all. But we thankfully have made progress along the way and I hope to win your vote to continue to do so. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Magnolia Library for sponsoring this event. It's very important that we get out and talk to the community and so people, this is our only chance every two years to actually interact with people beyond the school community sometimes and explain what it is we're doing and what we're trying to do. My name's Jonathan Pope. I was first elected to the school committee in nineteen ninety-eight. I served ten years. I was off for four years and I've been on since 2012. I was there when we fought for full-day kindergarten in 2002. And we had to go to the community and say, you know, we want to, we had run a trial program and people said, "Oh, no, we can't do that. That's bad. You know, we kids need to be at home." And so, we made it so that people could opt out of it. And the second year, nobody opted out of it. And yet, we still got a lot of resistance when we first tried to do it. So, I've been here for those kind of issues. I was here for when the Gloucester Education Foundation was formed. I was here when the Gloucester Fishman's Athletic Foundation was formed. I was here for the renewal of Gloucester, Newell Stadium. My wife, Susan Pope, was the special education coordinator at Veterans Memorial School for the past, since they closed Fuller since 2008. And we met, we were both teaching in special needs school where I was put together in adaptive vocational program for special needs students. And since then, since nineteen eighty-five, I've run Pope Cabinets, which is located right here in Magnolia in the industrial park.
Very good. Thank you. Now, we're going to have a series of questions. They're going to be presented to you by Bobby Lemay. We're going to ask you to keep your replies to one minute and then everyone else on the dais will have an additional minute to speak to that same question. Bobby Lemay.
Hi, everyone. Our first question, we'll start with you, Mr. Pope, and then we'll move down the line. In this day of gun violence, school shootings, and media desensitation of the trauma in our schools, what is your stance on the need for support in the classrooms, be it emotional support or other types of support?
For the last three or four budget cycles, any additional funds that we have had, which could be somewhat considered discretionary, has gone to the social and emotional needs of students. We have adjustment counselors in all of the elementary schools. We have school psychologists. Ten years ago, we didn't have these things. So, our stance is, my stance is, but it's pretty much going to be the stand of the school committee, is that we need to support this. We need to. We ask for things every year in our budget process. We don't always get everything we can, but I'm certain that that has always been a priority. And Veterans Memorial School is a trauma-sensitive school.
Yes, as Jonathan said, you know, we all are very cognizant of bringing safety into our schools. We have on the horizon a double-entry project, both at the middle and the high school, not to keep people out as much as knowing who's coming in and kind of managing that and still trying to be very welcoming to the community and to parents who don't want to have to worry about, is their kid safe? But they certainly know there's certain controls put in place. We have spent a lot of time and effort on anti-bullying programs within the schools and social, you know, counselors and adjustment counselors. And we're well aware that our community has a lot of needs, a lot of families have a lot of needs. And, you know, we will continue to make progress on aspects of safety, including making sure our kids have a voice in what they're doing. The high school responded to the Parkland shootings very passionately and very informed and intelligently. And, you know, with them, we hope to make change so that we won't have to be as worried going forward.
Could you repeat the question just so I make sure I address it properly?
Sure. Happy to. In this day of gun violence, school shootings, and the media desensitation of the trauma that's going on in the schools in our country, what is your stance for support in the classroom, be it emotional support or other types of support?
Thank you very much. So, one of the things I find most interesting is that there's, you know, likely to be consensus up here about the need for this type of support in the classroom. But if you watch where the money and the resources are flowing, I don't know that it's as strongly to the support as it could be. As Kathy just mentioned, we're about to spend, as a city, you know, a million-plus dollars armoring the front entrance of the high school. And as I mentioned previously and I've mentioned continuously, you know, that's money that could be spent on additional school psychologist salaries and the type. We also are putting a lot of effort into Alice drills. And you have this really interesting dichotomy where the more you are theoretically making these children safer by explaining to them how to behave and handle a really horrific situation, the less safe you're making these children feel because they are training for this really horrific event that I would much rather see worked to prevent it. Thank you.
So, yes, I think we're all in agreement about the need for social, emotional work for our children. There have been, there have been great strides made. I think we definitely, definitely need more. As has come up before, there's one adjustment counselor, one adjustment counselor in the high school for eight hundred students, which is the same number as in Plum Cove Elementary. So, there's definitely the need for more assistance for students. One thing that I have been interested in is there are, there's now an attendance officer that's been working in the district because of chronic absenteeism. But the absentee officer seems to be another sort of first, first-level communication with families and with children who, for whatever reason, don't want to come to school, maybe suffering from some sort of emotional traumatic situation. And I feel like the more, the more roles we can have of people who are interacting with students and their families, because I think the families are a key part of this, to build a, okay. Thank you.
It's a big question. We need a lot more time to talk about that. So, as a social worker, I sort of have a unique experience working in this field related to this question. But I'll just take it a bit further, that, as Jonathan mentioned, Veterans is a trauma-sensitive school. In my opinion, the entire district needs to be trauma-sensitive. Everybody sort of does things a little differently in each school. And I think we really need to come to reality about what our population consists of, being fifty percent high-needs. We have a very high rate of domestic violence, a really high rate of substance use in this community. And we need to have a clear roadmap so that every single educator is trained to recognize the signs and symptoms of trauma so that we can put an end to ineffective punitive actions and really come to an understanding on how to best treat kids' needs. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Great job on that question. So, we'll start and go the opposite way with Ms. Watson. Ms. Watson, the next question is, with the increasing level of difficulty in gaining admission to Essex Tech and other accredited vocational schools in our area, what is your opinion on the declining enrollment in the vocational programs in Gloucester? And how can we draw in more applicants to the vocational programs that Gloucester High School has to offer?
So, I'm not, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure if there's a declining enrollment. From what I understand, there's, there's more interest recently. I'm not, yeah, right, last year. So, I think, as with anything, this really comes down to how we communicate what's important to our kids, right? So, when we went to school, it was, we were sold, college is the way. Trades are really important. There's a lot of jobs in trades right now and I think we really need our kids to have sort of a hands-on experience on what that means, what it means monetarily if you don't go to college. How much money might you save if you go into the trades? If that's where you're, if that's where you're looking to go. The one thing that I will say, though, at the high school is that the vocational program is, the participants are skewed male. And so, I would challenge the school committee and the high school to really think about how to engage girls in vocational program as much as possible.
So, I took a really interesting walk through the vocational programs at the high school last spring. And I didn't get a sense that they were not in demand. In fact, I got the sense that they are in demand, they were, but they needed more support. They felt that they needed more support from the school committee. There, also, the culinary program has been cut and I was told that that was, there were many, many people interested in the culinary program. So, I'm not sure it's a declining interest situation, rather, I think it's both providing what the students want to learn and continuing to sort of broaden the experiences. From what I saw in the auto shop, in the mechanical shop, in the carpentry shop, people seemed really, really excited to be there and the teachers were very, very excited to be teaching the group that they were, but they wanted, they definitely wanted more. And they wanted to feel that the, that the school committee and that the system was supporting their work. And that's what I would do on the school committee.
So, I think the biggest issue we have here is this school committee has not done a great job holding administrators accountable. We have talked the entire time that I've been on this committee about the importance of vocational, how we want to support vocational. I think I've heard at six different meetings talking about reaching out to North Shore Tech and saying, "Can you please get the list of people who were wait-listed from your school so we can reach out to them?" I don't know if we've ever actually done that. But what we have failed to do as a committee is set actual numerical goals as performance standards that we want to see and have accountability if those standards are not being met. For as long as we continue to say, "Oh, vocational's great, we want to see more vocational," but fail as a school committee to set actual numerical targets, there's really no incentive. The administrators have a ton of things going on. If this is a soft target rather than a hard target, they're only going to focus on those hard numerical targets and this will continue to get pushed back. So, I'd love to see, in upcoming school committee term, us set an actual goal that says, "We want enrollment to hit these numbers within these amount of years."
So, people should know that Gloucester has four vocational programs where Essex Tech, I think, has twenty-two vocational programs. So, the number of kids that are going there are going for generally things that we don't offer and probably aren't going to offer. We've talked about, is there a particular program that maybe would add to our offerings at Gloucester High School? But there has not been consensus about what that particular program might be as best-suited for our kids. I do know that our automotive tech program has growing enrollment and this past June, we had a nice donation through the foundation to expand that program for an extra teacher. And I think kids are really getting that automotive tech is a really cool career to be in. You know, they're working on phenomenal cars with technology. It's not just changing oil anymore. We do know at the high school, we need to do a better job of really talking to the kids at the, at the middle school about the programs and about what's offered. We offer solar in the electrical program. And so, it's really hard to compete with a brand-new school down the road, but we continue to try. Thank you.
Vocational training is very important and it's, it's, you know, as Laura said, I think, you know, we were told our generation are coming up, you've got to go to college. Well, it's not true. It's not a good choice for every kid. And the, we need to do a better job of selling what we do have and we need to expand into programs that are, have jobs available here in Gloucester. We need to have a hospitality program or the culinary program. Now, we had that in place. We had a hard time getting a teacher that would stay. We had a difficulty filling that position, but the biggest difficulty we had is the facility. We needed to have a major capital expense. But with all the restaurants in Gloucester and the hotels, not to have a hospitality as well as a health care. And health care is the largest employer in Gloucester.
Thank you. I think you've cleared up a lot of misconceptions and also given us a lot of information about that school system that a lot of us don't know a lot about. So, thank you. The last question, and we'll start with Mr. Pope. The newly-built West Parish facility is really beautiful, but there are many parents who feel that parking at the school is an issue. The design of the building didn't take the parking, I guess, into consideration. What planning do you support for the new school, which will serve two districts so that we don't encounter a similar problem again?
There are a few things here that I'd like to correct. When we, when West Parish was designed, we set a set of priorities of what we wanted to do. A lot of you probably remember the old West Parish school. The buses came in, they drove all the way around the building, kids walked across the bus routes, cars came in, they drove around. What we said is we needed to have separate, distinct paths for walkers, buses, and cars. That was the priority that we set with the, with the designer. The number of parking spaces is determined by, there are a number of different standards, but there was, the key was, at the time, the charges were functioning. And Nick Taramina was the chair of the building committee and it was very clear that they did not, they wanted to maintain the field. If we had the field to work with, we could have put a lot more parking in there. We put as much parking as we could in there. The access point to that school is very limited. You know, that's, that's what we were dealing with. We did the best job we could. We're not going to be able to build schools anywhere in Gloucester that have enough parking for events for every parent. It's, it's not going to happen at the new schools. It's not going to happen, it doesn't happen at the high school with all the parking that they have, so.
With respect to the new school, I'm on the building committee for the new school and that school also has separate loops for safety reasons, for buses and for parent drop-off. The current draft or design at this point has plenty of space for the cars to come in and off the road. So, right now, veterans, the people get, the kids get dropped off on the bus at the, at the street. The one reason that I completely supported having the location at Veterans versus up at Schoolhouse Road was that if you drew a circle around where all the students go in terms of East Gloucester and Veterans, because it'll be combining those two school communities, sixty percent of East Gloucester kids live closer to Veterans School than they do to East Gloucester. And so, many more families and children will be able to walk to school. So, hopefully, from a parking perspective, it will be alleviated a little bit. And, and we're doing our best to get as much parking and as much circulation on the site as opposed to on the street for safety reasons. And as Jonathan said, it's very difficult for any school and any community in any town to have parking for school events. That's why we tend to split events into, you know, kindergarten through two and three through five or whatever. And that's the reality. I don't think people want their tax dollars to go to pave more green space. What we heard when we were looking at the school choice was, please save our green space. So, hopefully, we found a good balance between accommodating staff and guests and having the circulation.
So, unfortunately, the school committee, minus myself, has just voted to support a school building at a site that has fewer spaces than were available at alternative sites. We basically tried to learn lessons from West Parish, but ended up hiring the same exact designers, picked the site that had the fewer parking spaces. So, I imagine that the new East Gloucester Vets is going to have a very similar issue to what we have at West Parish. Unfortunately, those decisions have already been made and so we're at the point now where we're already kind of scrambling to do the best with what we have. I suppose we have one more set of schools to consolidate. Maybe third time will be the charm and we'll get it right. But I'm going to be straight with you, we've already made the wrong decisions that are going to end up with a new combined school with inadequate parking. And I don't want to hear that there wasn't an alternative with adequate parking because we had one in front of us and it was not the selected site. It was also $5 million cheaper. If you're trying to save green space, the site we selected took the one ball field and made zero. That site would have taken the two ball fields and reduced it to one. So, it's not looking great, but we are where we are. We have to just try and move forward with the position we're in.
So, I think the lessons learned from West Parish are important. Wherever we are in this system right now, there's still, there's still a little room for juggling the design, as far as I understand, for as much parking as possible. I think what we saw in the, in the debate over the sites for the new school was the worth of green space and how much we want to value that and how much we want to value a community school where there is already a school, et cetera, et cetera. I would say this, in this moment where we're also trying to save resources, I think we have to look at creative solutions. Perhaps a solution for an event where the entire school is coming out is figuring out a site where there can be shuttle buses to the school. You know, figuring out places where people can park safely and easily and then bringing them to the schools. Because there aren't going to be, this is a four-hundred-and-forty-student school that's being built. There are not going to be four-hundred-and-forty spaces by any stretch of the imagination. That's not including teachers. But I think we should start putting into our planning creative solutions that save resources so not every single person is driving to the same building looking for a spot. If there are locations where we can have alternate parking and perhaps shuttle buses or other ways of getting to the schools, that's one way of looking at what is a very difficult problem.
So, I think everybody has sort of covered the parking topic pretty well. And I think Laura's right that we have lots of creative ideas at our, at our expense to, to sort of juggle. But I will say that the one thing that I didn't hear is, how do we encourage kids to take the bus? Maybe to sort of... to take the bus? Maybe to sort of alleviate some of the parking issues and/or traffic issues around our schools. I know a lot of people who don't send their kids on the bus and I think we need to get to the bottom of why that is. It's part of the school experience, in my opinion. I know my four-year-old is psyched to get on the bus. So, I think we need to do a better job of making sure families are using their resources.
Thanks, everyone. Great job. I'm gonna turn it over to Kurt Henderson, the organizer for tonight.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna give you one more time to stand up and close with a minute's statement. But before I do that, are there any questions from the audience? If you have one, please designate it to a particular school committee member and then everyone else will have a chance to offer their rebuttal. Are there any questions out on the floor? Yes?
So, I had two daughters, and to speak to your point as well, go into technical trades classes and then not feel welcomed and feel like it's kind of love and leave. And so, I wonder if one of the standards that we can ask for sets to have of these, how many female teachers should there be within the trades classes? Or, and if there's also a tech-oriented lab that's not being used, could that be filled by a female lead teacher? Just to show that we really care about gender equity, bringing women, girls into that field.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate the question. I'm glad to hear your girls went into it. I'm sorry to hear their experience wasn't as, as good as you were hoping it was going to be. Gracie, my senior, is in cabinet-making this year at my gentle slash harsh nudging. And she seems to be having an okay experience. As far as setting a mandate for students or teachers of a certain gender, I don't know that that's an enforceable goal. However, it's certainly something that could be discussed and we could look at the way in which community is fostered inside of that and set other targets that don't necessarily say, we need X amount of women teaching. We actually had, up until a few years ago, our vice principal at the high school was the only staff member qualified to supervise the vogue program if it was to expand beyond the four classes we have now. So, if the culinary came back and was actually, came back as a vocational course, she would have been the one supervising the, but we unfortunately, in a budget cut, cut her position. So, she's gone now. That being said, in a roundabout way of saying, I go back to the community being fostered, that is something that can certainly be worked on with administrators. I just don't think we can set actual numerical targets. I don't think they'll be enforceable or necessarily fair.
So, when I met with Principal Cook at the high school, I asked specifically about equity training for teachers. And I will say that I was happy to hear that they are piloting a program at the high school. It's a small group to start because equity training can be uncomfortable and it can be vulnerable. And I think they wanna see how it goes, but they are starting the process, which I think is a big deal. So, there is work being done. It's not necessarily publicized very well, but they are, the conversations are happening.
And just one last thing to that. I just, coincidentally, posted an article this afternoon from the Gilnetter about girls in the robotics class, which just, which started as a vocational class, I understand. No, that's what the article said. Okay, well, but it was, it was a class that had no girls ten years ago when it started. It now has a few girls and the girls that were in there were talking about how they feel about being in this class and that it was hard to be a trailblazer. But, you know, the article, again, the article made a field. But then, what I was thinking of is the Gilnetter itself, which is the student paper. I learned this year from a student journalist, it used to be all girls. This year, there are now boys on the Gilnetter staff covering sports. And so, they're sort of expanding. So, it'd be interesting to see sort of how they reached out and made that, you know, cool for high school boys and figure out how to sort of do something that would make STEM more accessible to the girls.
I think gender roles, as it relates to what you might aspire to or think of as a career, form much younger. We've, through the foundation, we've worked with a lot of technology companies and STEM companies like Applied, and they feel very strongly about having more girls choose STEM. And what they've found is that girls are really excited through middle school. And then, they start feeling like those subjects, they're not necessarily intimidated, they're just not cool. Their peers are, you know, choosing other courses. So, if they're the nerdy person, they sometimes will back away from something that they're really good at for those reasons. So, I think as a community and as a society, those efforts are being made to make sure kids know, you know, follow what you're good at, follow what you're interested in. And our schools have been doing a study with the girls in STEM and are trying to make very good progress in terms of having those kids who are really passionate in middle school make those choices to different paths in high school. So, you know, similar to the vocational, it comes down to all of us, you know, seeing those roles as being anybody's role, male or female.
The issue of gender equity in the vocational program is something that we, we need to work on. We need to do a better job. And that will come from the teachers. They need, every student needs to feel welcome in any class that they pick. And it goes all, all the way around. It's not just, it's not just the shops. It should be in science classes or anything. So, that's something that we need to work on. We work on it, but I don't know that we work on it hard enough. The, as Kathy said, there has been a lot of work done in the middle school. I think Ann-Margaret Ferrante has been involved in supporting the, or connecting the tech companies with the middle school, where they do have a very extensive STEM program. And it's, you know, Wells, some of the best students are girls and women. And as she said, there seems to be this drop-off. And I don't think that's completely particular to Gloucester, but I'm very concerned about the issue of the non-welcoming feeling. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And if I don't see any more questions, Mr. Pope, if you would begin with your two-minute closing statements and tell all these lovely people why they deserve your vote.
Yeah. You should vote for me. I don't know. All I can say is I've been here a long time. I do have a lot of historical information that is helpful. I, I'm pretty sure this will be my last term. I have no intention of running beyond here. It's my hope to, to help the new people transition into a new school committee. You know, I've been here for a long time. I think the schools have made good progress while I've been here. If you agree, vote for me. If you think they're terrible, don't, okay?
Okay. I will not say that. I do hope you vote for me. I, I got into this because I came from a town that not everybody went to college. And then, I was fortunate enough to get an MBA and really get inspired by learning along the way. And it was never my intention when I stepped, when I left high school to go that far. And then, I had a son and I thought, all these kids need to be inspired to learn. I mean, who doesn't, who doesn't wanna learn something new and who doesn't wanna have all kids have the same opportunities regardless of their background, regardless of their home? So, I felt really passionate that there, that my professional background could bring a lot to the school committee in terms of finance and strategic planning and operational management. And I hope that I've made, you know, some very good decisions, both with the current, current challenges in front of us and also looking towards the future. So, you know, I stay passionate. I spend all my discretionary time, pretty much, between the foundation and the school committee on education items. And I, you know, I will continue to do so and I will work hard for you. And I would appreciate your vote. My name is third on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you again for coming. Thank you for hosting. Once more, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm asking for your vote. As I mentioned at the beginning, I think I'm uniquely qualified. I am a real estate attorney. Part of my living is based on developing and redeveloping parcels of land. Obviously, we have major capital projects coming up with our physical school facilities that I feel my particular knowledge is gonna be very helpful with. As I also mentioned, I'm married to a middle school teacher in a public school district. So, I understand the realities of being a teacher. I also think she does a pretty darn good job. So, I understand, I think, where the bar should be for teacher performance. I am a father for three young children who will be entering the school district. So, as I mentioned, beyond the normal tax implications that are facing everybody for the decisions we make, there's a personal attachment to the decisions we make that'll be affecting my children directly. And on the same side, I've just been through, as I mentioned, I have a senior in the high school. I've just gone through a thirteen-year cycle through the Gloucester school system after my own personal thirteen-year cycle wrapped up. Hers actually started about four years after mine finished. So, a lot of the same teachers. It's been fun. Anyway, those, those several different alleys in which I traverse, I think, put me in a unique position. I am running for my third term, so I'm not burnt out just yet, which is, you know, inevitable. And I would ask you to support me by voting for me. I will be first on the ballot. Thank you.
So, I'm Laura Wiesen. I'm number six on the ballot, before I forget to say that. I'm really doing this as a parent who's in these schools and who believes that all of our students, every single one, deserves the best possible education we can give them. And it's true, Gloucester doesn't have all the resources in the world. We have a beautiful city and a beautiful community. And not every, you know, not money for every bell and whistle, but we do have a lot of advantages here. I come from a more than twenty-year background as a journalist and communications professional. And I see a great need in this community for opening up communication, both within our school's family and between the schools and the greater Gloucester community and the North Shore community. I think that my skills in communication and in team, you know, working in a team, which is what, what television producers do, is we work in teams to achieve goals. And I think that working with this team, which however the team will be, will be created, I can work towards making and helping make these schools as, as strong as they can be for every student from, from the high, the learner who loves to read and the student who has having a lot of trouble just getting out of bed and coming to school. I think we need to, we need to spread the resources in ways that really can help each and every student and family. Because I really do believe this has a lot to do with our families. And I have the skills to make that happen. And so, I ask for your vote on November 5th. And I'm Laura Wiesen and I'm number six on the ballot. Thank you.
Hello. Again, I'm Samantha Virga Watson. I'm number seven on the ballot, which I'm told matters. So, pay attention because some people might just go one, two, three, four, five, six and leave me off unintentionally. But that's besides the point. As I said, I'm a licensed social worker who's done the majority of her work in this community. I grew up in this community. Most of my work has been doing in-home family therapy with very high-risk youth. I did that work when, before I was a parent. So, I know something about creating relationships, meaningful relationships, because I would sit in people's homes for three hours at a time telling them how to parent. And I wasn't a parent. So, they could have easily told me to go away because, you know, I might, I didn't really know anything, to be honest. Now, I'm a parent. So, that's my goal, is to create relationships in our communities and, and in our schools. Get into the schools, learn what's going on and advocate for social, emotional learning above everything else. Also, I would like to reach out to young parents. Every debate that we go to, every school committee meeting that we go to, there aren't young parents in the audience. And I really would like to try to encourage folks to come or find ways to involve them more as much as humanly possible. Because they're our bread and butter, they're who matter on the school committee. We need to be talking to the parents and to the teachers and to the administrators and making sure that our kids have the best resources.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you for running. And I think I speak for a lot of us here in Ward Five. We usually have a lot of questions, but we also have a lot of appreciation. And the Gloucester School Committee has given us a wonderful facility in West Parish, and we really do appreciate that. And thank you for all your work. Again, welcome. Tonight, we're gonna have some questions and we also wanna get some insight of who you are, how you think, how you get along, and all the great things that hopefully you wanna do for the city. I mentioned before that we have a lot of questions. We also have all that appreciation. And I mentioned the West Parish School. But here at Ward Five, we're getting a lot of support from not only the school committee, but from the councilors and the mayor's office. We have got a great project going on down the pier. Looks like it's going great and on time. And, you know, just, just overall, the reaction that Ward Five gets from the council and the mayor's office is very much appreciated. So, with no further ado, we're gonna start with the, with the questions. And, oh, I'm sorry. We're gonna start with the two-minute introduction. And if we can start going left to right, Jen Holgren, if you would start, please. I'd appreciate it.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jen Holgren and I am hopefully gonna be entering my second term as a city councillor at large. I am a registered nurse. I live at the end of Magnolia Avenue, which is technically not Magnolia, but I appreciate you welcoming me into Magnolia anyway. So, I am very excited to be here tonight. And I have a very special place in my heart for the Magnolia Library. And I've seen a lot of very good things happen, as Kurt has said, in recent years for Magnolia, which is great. So, we don't just send our money over the bridge and it disappears, which is very good. So, I do, I do hope that you'll consider voting for me. And I'm number seven on the ballot. But I hope I'm number one in your hearts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jamie O'Hara. For those of you who don't know me, I am on the board of directors on this building, the Magnolia Library. And I think I'm the longest-seated member on the board. Past president had nothing to do with this event, just to let you know in honesty to everyone. They asked me, I had nothing to do with it. But nonetheless, I care for Magnolia and the city of Gloucester and have had for my entire life. Before I was a city councillor, I fought to open up the fire stations, Magnolia being one of them, when, at an era when we were only operating typically with one fire station. I fought for that. Prior to that, I fought, those of you may know, they were going to put forty condominiums at the old Shore Cliff Nursing Home at the corner of Shore Road and Cliff Road. I was instrumental at exposing the issue to light at a time when no one knew that the project was even in the works. Something that a lot of people don't know, I'm in power plant construction. My background is in construction. I have a bachelor's degree from building Wentworth Institute. But I was, I started my career in construction at Salem Power Plant. Back in the early eighties, I worked on a hundred-million-dollar coal conversion project as a student at Wentworth. But later on in my life, our past governor, Mitt Romney, showed up and threatened to shut down the power plant. That power plant represented twenty-seven percent of the tax base for the city of Salem. I started a citizen- represented twenty-seven percent of the tax base for the city of Salem. I started a citizens' action group. We kept that plant going for ten years. Now, that plant represents twenty-seven percent, but more importantly, it represented high-paying jobs to many people, including many people in Gloucester. So I'm a believer in creating jobs. We in Gloucester need to do that. So, again, my name's Jamie O'Hara. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Christine Curio-Sicaranza, running for councillor at large. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you to the organizers. Thank you to Sixteen Twenty Three. It's great that we have so much attention on us tonight, but this isn't about us. This is about you. And this is about listening to all of your needs and all of your wants, and making sure that we, as the council, can represent that back to the administration, certainly, but more importantly, across our entire tenure of being your potential leader. We have a lot at stake. There's a lot of issues, and I'm sure you'll hear that tonight, but I want to just take a second here to applaud the people who are actually coming out to run. There's a lot of new faces. There's a lot of new people on the school committee side, and even here, the deists here tonight. It's a lot of work to run for office, as a lot of us are finding out, I think. But it's, it's easy to do when you actually care. I always say it's a hard thing when you actually, when you actually care, because it means you have to do that much more work to make sure that you can get a solution or you can get a compromise that can work for everybody. But when you know that you've done a good job, when I had the privilege of serving within the mayor's office as a constituent and communications officer-director, it was a delight to hear from people and to talk about not only just the problems, which there were plenty that we could hear from. We had a great walk-in service, but we also had a great social media presence. I think we helped serve a lot of the population. But we want to continue that to be seen across our community, you know, making sure, as we heard previously, that young people have a way to get an understanding of how to get involved and how their voice felt. We have an aging population. We have to serve the aging population as well. But we have to make sure that we have solutions that works for everybody, young people, the seniors, for people that have been here for a long time, and for people that are coming here for the first time. And I think across the issues you'll hear tonight, I think you have great people who are running for office, and I just want to take a second to applaud everyone who's actually running.
Thank you. I'm John McCarthy. I'm running for city councillor at large, like everyone at this table. I love this room. It's the only place I feel like I'm inside and outside at the same time. I, I'm a lifelong resident of Gloucester. I started at the age of fourteen, working for the city of Gloucester on the police boat. I went on to join the police department, and I retired this past April as a chief of police. Everybody wants to know, I'm out mowing my lawn the other day, and Bruce Toby drives by, and he says, "Did you hit your head on something? You just did forty years on the police department, and now, you know, you're running for city council." And I said, "I'm not done yet. I'm still young enough to give back. I have a good understanding of the city. I've worked with a lot of the city boards. I've worked with all the incumbent city councillors that are sitting here and the ones that aren't. I feel like I can hit the ground running." And I've heard a lot of talk, when I listened, I sat for the school committee, and they were all talking about position on the ballot. So I figured I better get that in while I think of it. I'm number one on the ballot, so check that first one off and get that out of the way. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me? My name is Joe Schalino, and I am running for my seventh term as a city councillor. I did a couple of stints as a Ward One councillor, and the rest have all been councillor at large. And looking back, sometimes, you know, before we move forward, you've got to look back on where we've been. And I'm pretty proud of the record that I've had and my, the six terms that I've served. One term was city council president for the years sixteen and seventeen. Looking back, I supported and voted for, you know, getting into the new vocational school. I supported the wind turbines when they came up. I supported Bowport when that came up. I supported Gloucester Crossing. I supported DeMullers, getting them in there. And something called the CSO, which is the Combined Sewer Outfall, that made Gloucester have a cleaner harbor and sort out, you know, the sewerage going into the harbor. I'm very proud that I was on the council that helped certify Gloucester as a green city. We are federally mandated as being a green city, and that's why we get the, when we show the turbines, and we show the electric cars and all the rest of it. I'm very proud of my career, and it's fun sometimes to see what you've accomplished, looking back. But now, I'm looking forward. There's still so much to do. And what I plan to do is try to get affordable housing, workforce housing, available in this city. And for some reason, we keep on talking about it, but there has to be a push, and I'm going to be pushing from the inside to make it happen. My goal as being on the city council is that I want to leave our children with the city of Gloucester in better condition than our parents gave it to us, and I hope you'll help me achieve that goal. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out, everybody. My name is Peter Cannavo. I'm running for city councillor at large. A little bit about myself. I was born and raised here. I'm a first-time father of a two-year-old, married to my beautiful wife, Kayla. I have a construction background in construction management, so I think I could serve the council very well with all this infrastructure project that is coming up. I'm a son of a fisherman. I'm a board director for a nonprofit organization called Gloucester Boxing, and we work with underprivileged kids, and that's another reason why I'm here tonight. I want to continue to see that these programs continue to get funded by the city and the state, and have these programs for these kids, you know, and I think our kids are our future, and it's important to work with that. So I just want to represent the hard-working class in this community. I want to be their voice, and I think it's important to have well-paying jobs as well. Being a union member, I understand what that means. So I appreciate you. If you guys consider me on November 5th, I am number four on the ballot. So thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Melissa Cox. I am running for councillor at large. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I have been on the council for eight years, six of which I served on budget and finance, and two on planning and development. I was the Ward Two city councillor for six years, and at-large for the last two. It has been a very big eye-opener to represent the entire city as opposed to just one ward. Shaun has been very kind to me over the last two years with driving me around and showing me things and educating me on your ward. It's very extensive, and it is very diverse. So I appreciate his assistance over the last two years. I've worked with two different administrations, and I've learned a lot over the last eight years. I hope to have your vote on November 5th. I am number two on the ballot, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And hold on to the mic, because we're going to start with you. Your questions will be presented to you today by Alana Horn, and you'll have one minute to answer the question, and then everyone else on the deists will also have a minute to respond. Thank you.
Good evening. All right. So we're going to begin with Melissa Cox, and then we will just pass the mic down, due to the fact that our microphone is plugged in and a little antiquated. It works best if you hand it behind you. Everyone. I know. I'm sorry. I tried. Question number one. What are your thoughts on private roads versus public roads, specifically, private roads for public use, as many roads are in Ward Five and in other neighborhoods like Bayview and Anasquam? Some of these roads are in constant state of disrepair, and the burden of the cost falls upon the residents to pay for fixing them. This creates an unequal system, since the majority of the downtown roads are on public property, and thus the fiscal responsibility for them is taken care of by the city. Is it simply a matter of additional funding? Melissa?
Why do I always get the two-minute questions with one minute to answer? So I have been educated a lot, sorry, there's a bug flying around, over the last two years versus public and private roads. Ward Two has maybe two roads that are private, so please understand my naivety with that experience. I don't think it's equal, but at the same time, we are governed by law that says we can only use public money on public roads. Shaun has worked to do a betterment project and make it a lot easier for us to move through the process, but then again, it's still on you. I know that there's been a lot of talk about making Lexington one-way, but you're surrounded by private roads. So how would you do this to where you can make Lexington one-way and not put a lot of undue burden on the private roads that are surrounding that area? Okay. Just so we have a better understanding, how much time? We had one minute? Okay. Well, I'm just, I just want to know, is there a thirty-second mark warning? Okay, thank you. He just said no. I thought that was a thirty-second warning. Sorry. So what we don't want to do is burden private roads with more traffic. There's also another problem that I've seen recently over on Wheeler's Point, is that there's a large amount of housing construction, and those massive vehicles that are supporting the construction efforts are traversing private roads and causing a lot of damage. So who pays the bill on that? If they're not a direct abutter, but they're still using a private road that has public access and causing damage, I think they should support some of the repair bills. Thank you.
With these private roads, I think it's important, excuse me, to work with the neighborhoods and the surrounding communities. Just, you know, you have to have neighborhood meetings. You have to discuss these ideas and compromise. You know, you've got to build a bridge and find a common ground where we can understand where we're going to fund these monies to build these roads. And I think Melissa just mentioned that there is a betterment program, and it seems to be working. So if it's not broken, maybe not fix it, but maybe just try to elevate it a little better and see where we can go from there. Thank you.
Complicated issue, but it's not only this ward. It's all over the city. Just a couple of definitions. Private road, that means your property goes to the center of the road, and you're, whoever's across the street owns the center. So it's private property as part, as considered by the city. Public way, even though you're a private road, people still have the right of way to go through it, which complicates it even more. And then you have the public way, which the city maintains and takes care of it. So how do we solve this? What we've done in other wards is that an estimate is given. We do engineering. We get a quote for the paving and whatever, whatever needs to happen. And what happens is that we, in terms of a betterment, that's how it's paid. And I know that sounds tough, but when you consider that the amount of money that's going to be spent is going to be small change, because you are paying cities' rates for the hot top, you're getting the city to do the engineering, you're getting the, an excellent buy, and then you can put it on your taxes for so many, so many, so many dollars. I did that, we did that on Hy-Popos, and it really is, was a benefit to it. But to add on to it, the other problem that we have is under those private ways, those private roads, our water supply, and this water supply is leaking everywhere, and the city comes back and tells you, "It's private way." When you fix the roads, you fix the water supply, and, you know, you don't have sewerage, it might be gas, and that's the way, that's the way the rest of the city's doing it, and it's been very successful and will work here also.
I think part of the question was, do we think it's fair? And I got to tell you, I don't think it's fair. I don't think that anybody's getting a tax break that lives on a private road. However, it is the system, so the city has gone to great lengths, and I know councillor Nolan is working with several roads over here in Magnolia now, to make it easier for the private way people, people that live on private roads that public have a right of access. I really think that there needs to be something, because you know something? I've done a lot of real estate work in my life, and, you know, on private roads and on public roads, and I've never seen a disclosure agreement from a realtor that says, "You're going to be living on a private road, and this is some of the things that you're going to have to do. You're going to have to pave the road. You're going to have to take care of drainage on the road." I really think that that, if it is a law, or some vague state law, I don't know about it, and I think maybe it could be handled if it has to be a state law, with asking Senator Tarr and Ann Margaret, or if it can be a city ordinance, that we create a city ordinance. I also think that repairs on these roads, when the gas company comes in, or the electric company, Underground Electric, that we should require them to do a quality repair on these roads when they're doing it, to come in here with the infrared machines and bind the hot top back in so that the roads last longer. But, I mean, it's the system we have. We've gone backwards. Twenty years ago, it used to be a fifty-fifty deal if the city accepted it. So maybe we can try to figure a way to make it a little bit more palable for the community.
So to echo the praise for councillor Shaun Nolan, he's done a remarkable job of trying to have the understanding of the public about the betterment program. And just to boil it down really quick again, it's basically the city acting as a bank, but you have to talk to your neighbors, and whether they are wanting to do a project to fix this private road or not, you have to decide how you, amongst your neighbors and yourselves, are going to go for that betterment program. So first and foremost, we have to give praise to councillor Shaun Nolan. He certainly got me in his truck to show me all around Magnolia way back when, so I echo councillor Cox's sentiments on his advocacy. But more importantly, when it comes to funding, it's true that you're hearing these terminology with regard to, is it public, is it private, or is it for public access? The thing is, as you just heard from John McCarthy, is there awareness? And I can't tell you how many people will say, "Well, how come, how come my, my street isn't being plowed anymore? Where's the service? It's just suddenly stopped." And the other part of the question was funding. So we, there is a formula that the state will give us money for funding, but the thing is, Magnolia knows this. There are a lot of private roads here. In fact, a significant proportion of them in Magnolia especially are. So until we can work with our state legislatures, but that's really on the mayor's side to do that, we have to continue these betterment programs, have to continue the communication and the awareness about these kinds of programs. And praise to the DPW where they've been trying to get some solutions in the interim, but we can't wait around for ambulances to fall apart, you know, as they're going down these roads where people are waiting for life-saving skills, critical needs. We have to do something, and I think, as you're hearing tonight, there's a desire to have that expanded, and I think we should.
Thank you. This is a very convoluted problem and has obviously hit Magnolia where most of the roads are private for public use. The Inglewood Road and Ocean Ave, or Inglewood Road and Lake Road are going through the betterment process now. They have the water lines replaced, and they're soon to get the base cost down this year. But you're paying for that. I worked with one of the board members, Jim Maldoney, to establish what the cost would be from a private, because the people who live on these roads have the ability to pave, maintain those roads themselves. And there is, there was a substantial price difference between doing it private and doing it public, but the difference is the, doing it private, the people have to collect the funds themselves and handle the funds versus doing it through the betterment process, you, that gets put onto your tax bill. But obviously, everyone pays high taxes or taxes, people, as People, as I hear knocking on doors, feel that taxes are high, that maintenance of the roads is very important. We carry a $30,000 line item in the budget, and that's what has been historical. $30,000 doesn't buy much asphalt and much repair work, but as a representative for you, I've been advocating to increase that and work with the administration to try to get more maintenance done on the private roads. People, historically, there have been people that have gone through the betterment process years ago, and that has gotten lost in the shuffle. So, as a representative of you, the people, I will be advocating for you to get more money to maintain these roads and looking at the city accepting more private roads. Thank you.
Yes, echoing what's been said, I can't say enough about the work that not only Councilor Nolan has done on streamlining the betterment process and working with the administration over the past couple of years now to get this right, but also Councilor Gilman, who's sitting in the back, and Councilor Memhard, and their wards, Ward Five, One, and Four are without a doubt the most heavily burdened with private roads and private for public use roads in the whole city. It is true, our budget line item for paving is $30,000 per year, and I have to hand it to the DPW. They are often handed a task that is just 10 pounds of work in a five-pound bag, and they make it work. I appreciate this community's willingness to come together and meet and talk about these difficult issues, and if 75% to 80% of neighbors can come to some sort of an agreement on a betterment, whether it is for paving or water main, I personally appreciate that, because I know that our public safety vehicles can access your home more easily. If the DPW can help you with an estimate, with finding a contractor, we can help you hold them accountable and build a safe road that is good for everyone. So, I appreciate this question. It's a difficult topic, it's one that we'll continue to talk about, because certainly our roads are governed not only by our city ordinances but by state statute, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. The next question, we're going to begin with Peter, so if we could slide the mic down that direction, please. Thank you. "What ideas could you put forth regarding easing congestion during peak hours in the summer, when West Gloucester residents in the Winger Sheek area cannot even back out of their driveways or return to their homes due to out-of-town beach traffic? Will you work with city planners to construct a more modern plan for facilitating the traffic flow? Creating kiosks in the beach lots or ticket gates for pay-as-you-exit systems to replace the current stop-and-go holdup gate are a possible solution? We invite your thoughts."
I thought it was going to be an easy one. We all know how crazy it gets here in the summertime, and I think Chris has touched on this topic before as far as using technology and communication, and I think it's important that we can do those things. We can use smart signs. You see them on the highway, you see them in other cities, and it gives you estimated time to where you're going. Better turning points when the traffic's backed up and we know that the parking lot's full, then we need to have some troops on the ground, just like some of the police officers that can help guide that traffic back out in a better fashion. Also, maybe some type of beach app where we can purchase a parking spot the night before or a small window, so we already have an idea how many people are coming. I mean, we know it's going to be full, but at least we can maybe separate the people who already purchased their tickets versus the people who haven't and just decided to show up at the last minute. So, there's a lot of ideas we can generate, for sure, and I think we've got to be open-minded about these issues, as well as, you know, better roads and help maintain that infrastructure, so that way, coming in and out makes it a lot easier for not only tourists but for our residents, and that's the most important part. They need to be able to leave their homes safely, not feel like they're stuck because of the traffic that we're getting through the summer season, and I think that's important. So, more boosts on the ground, better signage, better infrastructure on the roads, turning points, use better technology, and use it to our advantage.
It's an interesting problem, but we, as a city, we advertise to get people down into Gloucester, all over the country, all over the world. The Chamber of Commerce discovered Gloucester, so we're asking for these people to come in. So, how do we solve the problem for the three months? Is to redirect people, that said they know Winger Sheek Beach is not the only beach, Good Harbor Beach is not the only good beach, that there are other beaches that they can go to. So, getting the information out, that they can go to Stageford Park and take the trolley around, and then, you know, to Good Harbor Beach and to other beaches. That's a solution. The other solution I heard, and when I first heard it, I thought it was a little crazy, but if you think about it, it makes perfect sense, and that would be the boat ramp on the Aniscombe River. Plenty of parking at Gloucester High School during the summer, and run a shuttle to Winger Sheek Beach. Makes sense. All those people, you get them off the street, get them out of the parking area. So, that's something to work with, you know, with the harbor master, if that can be done, it would stay property, and, you know, that they have invested in. But we work very hard to get visitors into this town, and I think we have to manage it. And one of the biggest things that we never seem to talk about that causes the majority of the traffic is the bridge. When that goes up, and you know, and that's where the city doesn't have any control over. The state decides, you know, when that bridge goes up and how long it stays up. With two marinas that are on that river, it's a complicated issue. How do you make that happen? And I see it on Main Street all the time, where Rogers Street is all clogged up, and that's because the bridge is up. And so, it's a double-edged sword. We want the visitors here to come and spend at the shops and do the visitor economy, but we have to deal with the traffic unfortunately for the three months.
I'd like to say that I've never heard that complaint before, that we have beach traffic and that, but I have. There have been a lot of things tried over the years. In reality, Good Harbor Beach and Winger Sheek Beach seem to be getting more used. I know this year, the car count was down a little bit, but the revenues were up because of an increased fee, which may have had some direct result in bringing the car count down. However, there's probably six or eight times a year that Conquered and Atlantic Street, in my opinion, become a public safety issue. And it takes manpower on the ground to be able to alleviate that traffic, and you're never going to alleviate it all. What happens is, they tell them that the beach is closed, nobody listens, everybody thinks they're going to get in, everybody keeps driving over there. When that road plugs up all the way from Winger Sheek Beach back to 128, you have to turn them around, and you need manpower to turn them around, and I have said this at earlier debates. I think we need some type of an auxiliary summer workforce for the police department, because the regular forces is really manned for year-round use. In the summer, we have Fiesta, we have Fourth of July. We don't have the manpower to put out there, literally turning these cars around, checking to make sure these people are not residents. So, I think that would be a big plus towards helping this. Also, just, I think I had 30 seconds, right? Okay. Good Harbor Beach, one of the biggest problems that's happened over there recently is, everybody's discovered there's a Witham Street. So, everybody goes down East and Ave, they take a right on Witham Street, they come to the end of Witham Street, they take another right. They avoid all that Thatcher Road backup. I say we only let them in from one side, that that would be a way to stop that problem.
So, it's true, I think we can work smarter, not harder, and you're also hearing how there have been many solutions that have been analyzed, and we've tried to see how we can make incremental improvements, but we do want the tourists to be coming in, we do want to make sure that people are coming over that bridge and enjoying what we all enjoy every day, for sure. But when you're looking at apps, you have to think about who's managing that, and does the director of IT have the support that he needs to make sure that he can deploy that correctly? Do the seniors have the chance to make sure they're going to be afforded the same tools? Do people who speak a second language have what they need to understand everything that we're putting out there? What you're talking about is a more comprehensive, communication-smart plan. And as we work with our community development team, and we've seen a lot of gains there, we've done traffic studies, you know, I look at the MAPC and how there's been grants that have been put out there for Beverly and Salem that have the old coin meters, but they have the kiosks and they have other solutions that you can use in app. There are plenty of vendors out there that will incentivize, as you're hearing, for you to be moved around in the city in a certain way. I had the privilege of working with John McCarthy, when we would, on Fridays, we would put out the alerts to tell people what the traffic patterns could be. We don't have that going on as much anymore. There are a lot of events going on now. It's not just the beach, it's all about it not necessarily working with one another. If we were more aware of a calendar of events, the Special Events Advisory Committee, if they were able to harmonize with the Chamber of Commerce, with the DMO, the Discover Gloucester, working with the public safety officials, we could utilize our resources in a way that we don't have to work to our fullest extent and exhaust our resources, but work smarter, not harder. We can do this.
Thank you. When I was first elected four years ago, I pushed for a visitor and beach traffic ad hoc committee, which was started, and we studied it. There was approximately eight very intelligent Gloucester residents that we analyzed, just bought everything, met with department heads, studying the issue. And obviously, this issue isn't anything new, it happens every year. The advent of technology, the tourists that are coming, visitors that are coming into Gloucester to use the beaches are learning new ways to shortcuts, you know, putting additional signage on 128 to inform them that, you know, Winger Sheek is closed, Good Harbor's closed. These folks are coming to Gloucester, and they're going to get to the beach one way or another, and it's a moving target. We need to adjust as times change. The walk-ons on Good Harbor are increasing with taxis, with Lyft, with Uber, people are skirting around, parking in the parking lots, parking any place where they can park for nothing and taking a $5 ride. So, as a representative of the people, I would continue to push for changes. The changes are, you know, signage and information, potentially looking at, we looked at putting a satellite parking. It was Stageford Park was a place where people could go, typically there were extra parking spaces. Now, those parking spaces are being filled up. So, Good Harbor and Winger Sheek are, you know, filled every weekend, every decent weekend, and Stageford likewise. So, looking at potentially O'Malley or the high school as satellite, where we can shuttle them by bus, moving them back and forth. Thank you very much.
So, I agree with a lot of what's been said here. This is an issue that is what I call multi-pronged. We have to tackle it from many different perspectives. We, I am a creature of social media, and I have seen over the past couple of years, the Gloucester Beaches page share information on whether or not Winger Sheek is full, whether or not it may be a good idea to go someplace else. I've shared that information as well. The last thing I want is for us, as a welcoming city, to take a car full of screaming kids from Lexington and have them turn around. Really, that's not what I want. And I agree with the idea of auxiliary staff, ancillary staff, boots on the ground, telling people where to go, telling people, "I'm sorry, it's too late, try this instead." Just that face-to-face connection is so important, maybe even hopefully before Atlantic Street and Conquered Street get backed up to the highway. I do agree, it's probably inevitable, it's going to happen at some point, and this is the mixed blessing that we have by living in what I think is the most beautiful place in the world. So, I appreciate your patience. I appreciate the patience of the hoteliers and Cape Anne Campsite who have to deal with this every single year, and they want to make sure their guests enjoy the amenities that people from out of town are enjoying and that we get to enjoy every single day of the year. But there is no one easy answer, we just have to keep trying and keep taking different stabs at it. Thank you. Melissa didn't get a turn yet. Sorry.
I do agree with what has been said to a point. I think we need to look at it a little bit more in reverse. If we had somebody taking the money with a walkie-talkie, communicating with somebody at Atlantic, maybe even remove one of those islands at Atlantic to ease the turnaround and ease the flow there, and then also somebody at Causeway. Those are really the best turnaround points that we have to get people diverted from going to Winger Sheek once that lot fills up. I'm not a big fan of shuttles, there's only so much sand at high tide, and when people go out at low tide and then they have to keep backing up, there's only so much room we have. We can put people in parking lots all over the city. It's not going to matter if you're sitting on top of your neighbor. It's not going to make for a good experience, and people are going to get angry. One of the things about the auxiliary idea, I am all for summer employment, we also have to make sure that we're not stepping on the toes of union contracts and making sure that we are not discouraging our police force from taking these details, but you and I both know, I'd rather, we would rather be on a sandy beach on a beautiful day, and so would they. So, it's very hard to get police to take details on those days. And I think having those pinch points satisfied is also more business-friendly. I know that if I'm not in and out of breakfast and to Marshalls by 8 o'clock, I'm not going until later in the afternoon, if that, and then I monitor social media to find out when the beaches are full and to find out when a good time is to go to Marshalls. I think it's unfair for us to be burdening them with a traffic problem that could be solved.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to question three, where we will begin with Chris. Thank you. "Based on your knowledge of Gloucester, its geography, and the lay of our land, what would your future endeavors be in regards to minimizing the hazards of the changing climate? Part A, how do you plan to implement changes in our economy, our ecosystem, and our infrastructure to better protect the integrity of our buildings, homes, and roads for what lies ahead? And part B, if you could implement or amend one thing about our current laws and regulations in regards to climate change and thus create a more eco-friendly environment for Gloucester, what would it be?"
So, climate change is a very real issue that's affecting all of us even today. I think anyone who had their car at the Gloucester High School parking lot a couple of years back, who happened to have that incurred to them, will tell you that. But it goes beyond just one incident, it goes beyond just a flood here or there, it goes to a more comprehensive conversation that we need to have. I applaud the mayor's office, the administration, for doing everything they can to offer solutions by working with state and federal leaders especially, to try to get more support, more awareness. And that's everything from the Aniscombe dredging, all the way through to the different seawalls that we're seeing being repaired across the city by different areas in Lanesville. And we need to continue that effort, but we have to advocate in one voice. And so, when we had the Gloucester Green brand that I helped to manage alongside some great people, it was really one repository between the Town Green and the different Clean City Commissions and different volunteer nonprofit groups with city officials to kind of make the issues be more known, more aware. I think that's a big thing that you'll hear me continue to say, is the communication and the awareness is a critical piece to that, but there's only so many things that we can do on the city council side. So, we have to work hand-in-hand with the mayor's office, we have to work- We have to work hand-in-hand with the partners that are certainly ready, willing, and able. And this, of course, can affect everything from our fishing industry all the way through to marine life sciences that are trying to get up here as well. And so if we don't take action now, though, it'll be clear that we'll be paying for it later. And so the more we have the conversations now, without necessarily accusing anyone of anything, it's just to listen to one another about the problems that they're facing today, about what it could be for tomorrow, and by the way, having some compassion to understand, we all have to do this together. We have to do this together by listening and understanding what's at stake in its our very city itself.
Being on the coastline, we're impacted more so than obviously cities and towns inland. It's going to be an expensive proposition, fighting Mother Nature. The tides are rising. I think that's, everyone knows that. Whether it's man-made or a natural phenomenon, we can leave that to another conversation. But as a city, we have to be aware of every dollar that we're spending. We just, as city council appropriated $3.5 million to put a cutoff wall at Gloucester High School. That's our high school. The students of the recent flooding of a year and a half ago, we were fortunate that the floods happened towards the end of the week versus on a Monday, where the students would, obviously, being at Gloucester High School and seeing your football field and parking lot flooded, doesn't lead to students being focused on what they're there to do and learn. So we have to provide an environment, in this case, for the students to learn. But as I mentioned, Mr. Distino, the CAO of the city, is here tonight. The $3.5 million that we're going to spend and an engineer who is going to create a design, what kind of guarantee are we going to get from that engineering firm? That when that water rises to the elevation, that the design is designed for that Gloucester High School is not going to be flooded? Because we don't want to be spending money, and people do provide guarantees. We're all professionals. We have to be cognizant of every dollar, every penny that we're spending to fight Mother Nature. Obviously, we have to look at the state and federal government, hopefully that there is funds out there that will help us. But we have to be aware of, again, every dollar that we are spending as a city. Thank you.
So I will do my best to answer those questions. Thank you. What I really appreciate about this city is that we are an absolute embarrassment of riches in human talent, and I am thinking about our Clean Energy Commission when I am thinking about this. We have a group of volunteers who have background in clean energy, who have advocated for us ever since the inception of our green community status with the state of Massachusetts, and they've saved us and brought us literally millions of dollars over the past 10 years. I am also excited that we've helped to update our stretch codes, our building codes, so that every new construction is compliant with green recommendations, and that's through our building department. And I'd like to say, even the small fixes are very important. So recently, I attended a meeting to learn more about the flood barrier that's going to be installed at the high school. And the engineers were extremely knowledgeable, and they brought a lot of wonderful ideas up, and I'm glad that we're going to be doing this because Gloucester High School is one of our most expensive assets. But what nobody considered until a neighbor brought this up was that sometimes the flooding comes from the sewer grates, from the drainage grates, not from the tides, but from literally up through the drainage pipes. And I'd like to think that maybe it's a small fix, maybe it's just, as he said, like a $38 valve. So I want us to be able to fund the big projects, and I'm glad we're doing that to protect what we have, without hopefully spending too much money in the aggregate, but also doing things that maybe are tiny, but sort of like a David and Goliath-type situation. So maybe a tiny little pebble can solve a big problem. Thank you.
I think what you've heard so far is dead-on as far as infrastructure, the walls. I mean, during the 2018 tides, that we had six tides in a row, we had people that were stranded inside our sewer filtration plant on Essex Ave. So preparedness, I think we have to be prepared to evacuate certain areas. I know I was working through all those floods. We had trouble getting beyond the Goose Cove Bridge that day into Lanesville. We were stuck at the Cape Anne Campground on Concord Street. We couldn't get any further to get out to some of this ward out at Bray Street and Castle View and out towards Winger Sheek. So I think there needs to be a preparedness plan developed by the city. But getting back to what we can do, and it's a worldwide problem, it is, you know, little Gloucester, but our school system has a program called Changes Simple. Where Beeman School last year did a project where they said, "How many plastic bottles do we use a year here at Beeman School?" And the number was staggering. It was 57,000 plastic bottles that they use. And you know, I went home from the first debate, and I watched it to see how the debate went, and I looked at myself, and I was drinking out of a plastic bottle at the debate, and so for the next debates, I'm just bringing this from home. But I think education is the key. I think, when I've read on this, is there's a 12-year window to lower our carbon footprint, our personal carbon footprint, to zero. What better way to start than with the first grade? That gives them 12 years to learn and lower their carbon footprint, and that's the only way we're going to succeed in the long-term battle, is education. Thank you.
This is two parts to this question. One is where we are now, and we have to be in a position to look for grants in order to take our infrastructure and start upgrading it for the day when it does get flooded. And in the past, we just got some, we got some money, I think it was from the state, in order to waterproof, sounds crazy, our sewer pumping stations. Because that is so critical that when, if there is a flood, you know, that sewage is going to go everywhere. But to make sure that those pumping stations will work underwater during the duration of the flood, that's one thing. These are the things that we as the city councillors, we as a city, need to start upgrading and maintaining the infrastructure that exists. The second thing is this, we talked about the private roads and the pickle that we're in now, these people that are stuck fixing their roads. And how did they end up that way? It was poor decisions way back when by the planning board and by the ZBA. And what they did was, they let contractors go in, build houses, and not specify what type of roads, and hold them to it. Now we're in the same situation again. You want to build, and the FEMA map tells you that it's a red zone, a high-velocity zone, but you say you've got a beautiful view. We have to protect the citizens of Gloucester, the first responders, and say, "Listen, you want to build there? You have to sign off that we're not going to come and rescue you when it happens." We have a situation where we're going to have to build houses on stilts in order to get them above the flood zone. How do we handle that? How do we handle the height? Do you want to look at that? But this is what's in our future. We have to see what other communities are doing on the coast. We have to see and write down our zoning ordinance to update it. Thank you.
So everybody touched on all the important topics, you know, climate change and infrastructure, all these things, seawalls, and we recognize a lot of these issues. And aside that, I think it's important to look at the people you're putting in office, one as myself, who, again, remind that this is my wheelhouse. This is part of the things I do, you know, and I understand how these projects can facilitate. So I think I could be important to the council in helping guide these project finance and these difficult decisions. We all know that these issues are important, and we need to take them seriously. So with that being said, I would highly consider myself an asset to the board. Thank you.
So implementing change. Over the last four years with the current administration, they've implemented a lot of change that we have backed as city council, and some of those changes are stabilization funds. When we get these grants in that have a 10% or a 25% match, we're able to match those and get those grants in and fix things in the city that affect climate change at very low dollars. Some of those matches are in kind with services rendered by department heads or staff. But we're not taking money away from a department to fund these implementations. So that's really important. Another way, the first thing that I would want to do to change, if possible, is our zoning laws and make them easier to update with the new FEMA laws and the FEMA maps and the flood maps and the, you know, all this stuff that's ever-changing from the federal government. We're slow to accept those changes because it is such a huge process to provide any zoning relief. So we have people that want to build their houses on stilts because they have to, and we still have a height restriction, but they're required by federal law to build their house six feet up, but we still have a ceiling limit. So they might want to build a two-story house, but they can't. Now they can only do a one-story because they're already six feet off the ground. So it's silly changes like that that matter.
Thank you. That was everybody, right? Sorry. Question number five, we'll begin with Jen, inconveniently because of the microphone. Sorry, guys.
It's just easier. It has been estimated and stated that Gloucester needs upwards of 500 affordable housing-qualified spaces. Is this a fair projection? Where can we expect to work these homes and apartments into our existing infrastructure? In a world of VRBO and Airbnb, is it far, it is far more lucrative to rent by the week in a beautiful vacation land like Gloucester than it would be to create affordable rentals for residents? How will you work to implement regulations that will keep housing costs low for working-class men and women attempting to live in Gloucester full-time?
I am incredibly happy to answer this question. This has been one of my absolute passions since way before I even thought about running for city council. Currently, I am on our Housing Production Plan Implementation Committee. I am the council liaison to that committee, and we are working on our inclusionary housing zoning ordinance. And I will say, there's not just a shortage of affordable or attainable or workforce housing, there's a shortage of all kinds of housing here. Massachusetts has had an explosion of jobs, but the housing market is incredibly difficult to maneuver around in, especially on Essex County, as we know. We're all very fortunate to have such high real estate value here, but the unfortunate thing about that is that kids growing up here can't afford to stay here. And I've had some very personal stories from friends about that. So I'd like to make it easier for families who live here not to have to choose between moving or renting out their property as an Airbnb. I'd like to make it so that it's easier for people to maybe build smaller dwellings on their big properties, if possible, or vacate their bigger homes and live in elderly housing if they so choose. But we have to get creative. We have to work with the nonprofits that are in this area, and thankfully, we have a bunch of them. We have Action, we have Harbor-like Community, we have the YMCA, and they're all willing to go hand-in-hand with us as we work to look for more ways to advocate for housing that people who live here can afford to live in. I'm also happy to say I'm looking into the affordability of assisted-living residences in Gloucester. There's, the city council has an ad hoc committee for that, and the affordability is pretty low, unfortunately, for this area. The average price for an assisted-living facility by month is $7,000-ish per month, so most people can't afford that. So we, okay, thank you. Anyway, there's a lot more to say. Please give me a call or email me with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a loaded question. How many of you would like to have the city of Gloucester tell you how much you can sell your house for? I don't think anybody. I had a constituent call me last week. There's a few illegal apartments in Gloucester. He's presently charging $500. He wants to make his apartment legal, in his words, "So he can charge $1,300 a month," excuse me. He's charging $500 a month. The city can't control real estate market. We can't control the price of a rental unit. But what we can control is bringing jobs to our city, bringing real jobs, maintaining real jobs, so people can make a real living and afford to live on our island. You know, we have to look at development. We obviously travel in the summertime. We answered the question about traffic. We build more homes. What are we getting? More traffic. We're looking at an eight-unit building down at the bottom of 35 Fuller Street, bottom of the hill. We obviously have congestion in the village already. So we, as a city, have to look at the bigger picture, but I'm an advocate of maintaining the businesses that we have in our city, not losing businesses due to high taxes, due to high water and sewer rates, and lowering real businesses into our city that pay a decent salary that people can afford to live in our city. So that's what I will, as your representative, I am an advocate to growing our business stock. The city of Gloucester makes money off of a business. A residence, it costs the city of Gloucester money. A dollar twenty-five for every dollar the city of Gloucester collects, the average home. So we need businesses in our city. Thank you.
So it's, I think it's officially declared, even on the governor's side, it's an affordable housing crisis. Again, the terminology, it doesn't matter. We all have seen it in our own lives in different ways. You know, I think the opportunity for us to potentially take a look at the spaces across, the dwellings across the city that are apartments, that aren't maybe perhaps properly registered, if we can go back, I think it was Council Orlando way back when, who actually put that up as an order, to potentially get people more on board, get some revenue, and then, by the way, that's hitting your affordable housing number. So there's a lot of units out there right now that I think we could take in. I think Joe Chalino will maybe talk about this, is talking about the permitting process to make sure that it's clear before, during, and after what the process is across all the different boards and how you relate to the city, and we can streamline that. And we've done that, actually. Credit to the building department and the IT department for getting the CloudView permit online, because you can do that online to get more options. But what we're talking about is affordability. And you have to make sure that it's a dwelling that people can, as Jen said, there might be creative spaces for people to use their own land. I think Council Val Gilman did a great job of getting awareness around the tiny houses and how you can use that within your lots. There are a lot of people that have, perhaps underneath the zoning side there, that are just short of what they can do to build. And so if variances are being given, can we have a conversation with the zoning board to see where we can get some relief? But this is a conversation that you have to have hand-in-hand with partners that know what they're doing. The Affordable Housing Trust is certainly a great tool that we can have to help affect other major projects down the road, and you're seeing that happen. But you also see Cameron's with the North Shore CDC. You know, I think there should be more of a call to action with the Economic and Community Development Team and hand-in-hand, of course, with the administration to see how we can work with the partners that did it well in Beverly and Salem, like the RCGs out there that did mixed development, so you can have business with residential. We can do a healthy mix and still get good results.
We're getting older in Gloucester. Looking at the figures, in, within 10 years, 60% of the population are going to be 60 and above. There is a... That's unacceptable for our elders, and we have to think of some ways that they can stay in their homes. One way I've talked about in the two previous forums is maybe having some city-sponsored estate planning classes, so that these people, and I'm talking about people my age, around 60 years old, can start planning to be able to maintain their house and maybe turn their house over to their children as they get older. We need to look at every different way we can to try to create places for our children and the next generation to live. We need to look at zoning. We need to look at ways to turn a single family into a two-family. We need, I, I think the city has done great as far as the definition of affordable housing in, where it comes under the state statute. They've, they've got 30 units at Fuller that they've got guaranteed. They've got 53, I believe, at the old YMCA. When that's built out, Action's coming in with a friendly 40B for the Cameron's property. So, I think a lot of inroads have been made, but I think we have to consistently look for new ways, and I like the, the small secondary structures on lots. So, there's a lot of ways we can keep looking. Thank you.
One of the last public hearings that I had when I was city council president, we were rezoning the Fuller School property, and we were putting in, we were talking about affordable housing. And at that time, people came and spoke at the public hearing about affordable housing out of the 200 units that they were going to build in our building now. And at that time, if you remember, there was a move that they would just contribute to the charitable, the Affordable Building Trust instead of actually building the units. And the people coming in, it was just amazing, who in this day and age in our city really need a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, whose children are sleeping on, sleeping bags on the floor, who's sleeping on the couch? It's, it's really amazing that we have that kind of need here, and that, that was two years ago. But, and I'm glad that the Affordable Housing has passed for the, for the Fuller School, and Dublin is going to build the 30 units. But everything is not dire. We've got some, we've got some irons in the fire. 30 units that are coming from the Fuller School. I think the Cameron's property is, finally got funded. I think it's around 35. Think, think about Vision with me, the old YMCA, turning that into possibly another 30 units. Have some vision with me, the East Gloucester Elementary School, that'd be a perfect place to put maybe another 20 or 30 units in there. And then what I'm talking about is, when I, when I'm talking about affordable, and I'm big on definition, you know, this is not subsidized housing, this is workforce housing, this is affordable housing. This is where your young teachers are going to live. This is where your, your young engineers, your, your people starting out, the young couples that can just afford a, a home and start their lives here in Gloucester. That's how we attract people. We need to work on it, and it has, and that'll be a big priority for me. It'll be hopefully, and I know the administration will work with it too.
Again, this is in my wheelhouse. We're talking about construction projects, infrastructure improvements. And I think what Chris was talking about with Joel Lando was Gloucester zoning ordinance of 5.30 and 5.31. These were amendments to the zoning ordinance that permits illegal market rate units that fit the building and fire codes to become legal, as long as there is a deed restriction making it affordable. So, you're giving these homeowners incentive to go legal, you know, now they're covered through insurance, equity goes up, the city benefits because the property taxes go up. And so, it was passed nine to one, nine to zero, back in 2017, and it has a sunset clause for three years, and it's going to close next year, 2020. So, maybe this is a clause that we can extend. A lot of people don't know about this because I think it didn't get brought to a meeting or the community wasn't educated on it. I think it's a good idea. I think the council did a good job passing it. I think we just need to now educate the people. And there's other processes that need to happen in order for this to keep going. And some of my other ideas were that we need to also look back at some of the current ordinance as well, and maybe peel back some of the restrictions to attract developers because they want to develop more affordable housing. But when the properties in Gloucester are extremely expensive and they're only zoned to build one property, they have no incentive to want to come here and do that because there's no money for them, and that's what they want. So, if we can work with the zoning, the ZBA, and these developers, I think we can tackle more affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
So, if I'm reading your question right, 500 units are needed to make our 10%, which is a quota that we have to meet in order to avoid 40Bs. And a 40B is basically any developer can come in and, and build housing as long as it's affordable and not, like, completely skip our zoning laws. So, while I do want to get to that 10%, I don't want to discourage people from coming in and building more affordable housing. I think that we also need to be smart about it. We keep throwing things in downtown and Ward III for affordable housing, and we're not looking at the outskirts. We need to share the responsibility of having affordable housing near train stations, so that's West Gloucester. I, I think there, if we have city-owned land in those areas, we need to start looking at those and see if they're developable, and then partner with Harbor Light Partners, who is in the business of doing these kind of projects. We, we shouldn't be landlords on stuff like that. Those projects are, they're inspected on an annual basis. You have to basically reapply and qualify for those, those positions in those buildings, and they're heavily regulated as far as how many kids you can have. So, it's not going to be like eight people sleeping in one apartment. They're heavily regulated. The 3% impact fee that we recently adopted, you know what? Maybe it is a negative for rental units. Maybe, maybe we will see less companies using Airbnb and stuff like that. And this doesn't impact the... Time?
Okay, thank you very much. That ends the question period. You can keep the mic, Melissa.
Okay.
All right, because now we're going to do your closing statements. Keep it to two minutes. Thank you. You're up.
I'm Melissa Cox. Said that earlier. I forgot to say it was the last debate at all, so I'm making up for lost time. I have eight years of experience. I really enjoy what I do, and I think I'm effective and I make a difference. I'm asking for your vote. I hope that you will support me and check me off as one of your four votes for at-large. I am extremely accessible. I work downtown. I can walk from my house to my office. I heard they ever do, but sometimes you just need to drive. Anyway, I, I really like representing the entire city. I think it's such a neat balance that, to support the ward counselors. When I was a ward counselor, there wasn't a lot of at-large counselors that were very supportive and a backup, so I really want to pride myself on doing that. Sean lets me do it a lot, probably more than he should, but I piggyback with him on a lot of things over here. I had the honor of helping out with the Magnolia project for the pier. You guys were very welcome, welcoming to me to be over here and to help with that. Not everything we do is hard work, so I, I like those events. It kind of gets you in with the community. We do have a lot of things to do, and picking a team that's going to work together is extremely important because we can't, one person cannot do it all. We have to have a good team.
Please consider me on November 5th. Again, I'm a native here. I was born here. I was, I, I did everything here. I love this city. I really do, and this is why I'm here. I, I can speak from the heart when I say that. I want to make sure that our kids' futures are in good hand, and I want to make the right decisions for them. And I want to represent that hard-working class that wake up every morning and, and go to work, and, and they want somebody to have a voice for them up here. And I think I would be a good choice for that. So, I would really consider appreciating, I would really appreciate your vote. Again, it's, it's a beautiful city. I could go on and on and on. I think you got the point by now. So, please consider me on November 5th. I'm number four on the ballot. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. I want to thank the Magnolia Library Association for hosting us. It's always very, very informative, and I learn a lot every time, you know, we come here. One of the things that I've seen, just looking at the avenue out there, probably around two or three elections ago, it was, the street was all dark. It was in dark and dire straits, and I seen all that time. You know, that the street's been paved, the sidewalks have been done, the stores are lit up, and flowers are in the flower boxes, and it looks like a vibrant community, which it is. And, you know, and it's come a long way from where it was. I've been on the council for a lot of years. I feel I have the ability to get things done. I've proven it in the past, between some of the things that I mentioned, between the turbines and, and the hotels, and, and, and doing what is good for Gloucester. Sometimes, that's very, very difficult. When the permitting for the hotel came through, there was all kinds of threats, not only made to me, but a lot of the other counselors that were on the, on that. When Gloucester Crossing was being built, again, you know that it's good for the city, and you have to work to make sure that happens for the city. And every time I go to Dumulus and I see all those employees that are there, there's hundreds of people that rely on their store alone, you know, for their income. I have the vision, the vision that to take, take this city forward. We're, we're, we're on a growth pattern. We have a momentum. We need to keep it going. But most important, I have the experience and the history of how things work and how to get projects done, how to lobby, how to work with the mayor's office, how to work with the department heads, how to work with my fellow counselors, especially the ward counselors. You know, Sean has a, has an issue that he wants to do. I'm there to support him. Thank you.
Thank you to 1623 Studios. Thank you to the Magnolia Library for having us over here tonight. It's always nice to come over here. I spend a lot of time over here, especially my time as assistant chief and police chief. I come over every year to do the 5K, and I promised the people in Magnolia that I was going to jump off the pier this year. That's a tradition, but unfortunately, the pier wasn't done, so I didn't get to do that.
[laughter]
Yeah, next year. I'm asking for your vote on November 5th. I think that my experience in the city of Gloucester, my time on the police department, patrolling every one of your neighborhoods at some time over a 40-year career, knowing the, the strengths and the weaknesses of your, your, your community, knowing where the problem areas are, having worked with virtually every city agency there is, I think, like I said before, I can hit the ground running. I think that I'm a good listener, and I think that's what's important to be on a, on the city council. I think that I will listen to every one of you, and I'm asking to be your voice at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you again to the Magnolia Library organizers. Thank you to 1623. You know, it's, it's a very special thing that I think we have in this community, and I think you're seeing that in places like this tonight. And I remember one of the first constituent meetings I had was right here when they were talking about a potential cannabis site coming here, and I saw a lot of authentic Gloucester, and I'll leave it at that. But that's something that I think is our unique charm. I think we have to play to our strengths. And when I think about the opportunities in front of us, we can certainly look to the past about how we can do things to best inform the future, but we have to look ahead. We have to talk about solutions. We have to talk about the leaders who will get us there. And it takes a lot to certainly commit yourself to be on the city council. There's a lot of commitments there. But more important to that is how do we make it such that we have a government that works for you, that listens to you, morning, noon, and night, and can be there for you morning, noon, and night? And that takes a team. That takes a team work to do that. And everyone up here is passionate, and I'm very proud of sitting next to every single person up here. One thing I just want to quickly remark, if you saw the debates last night, they can get a little nasty. One thing that I love here is that this is all respect. So, I am asking for one of your four votes, number three on the ballot, but you're in good hands. I promise you that. I promise you that. We might disagree on some things here and there, but our heart is in the right place. I want to use that heart and passion for the future. I want to use the best tools that we have in front of us, and I want to play to our strengths. I want to work hand-in-hand with the mayor's office, but I want to work hand-in-hand with everyone in this room. I want to work hand-in-hand with the hard-working city employees that do their tireless job morning, noon, and night themselves, that don't get a lot of love back. And it's okay to have high standards, but we have to have some respect and compassion come back in a little bit. And I think we can do that, but we have to have honest conversations once again, and I hope we can get a younger generation to get in those boards and commissions to influence us to be welcomed. We can do this. We could do it together, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Jamie O'Hara. I asked for your vote on November 5th. I've been representing you for four years. As I mentioned earlier, I represented you prior to that, fighting to open up the fire stations. I believe that every person in Gloucester deserves to have representation. I'm an independent person. I'm self-employed. I've had a business, O'Hara Industrial Services, for 17 years. I have about eight employees now. I know what it's like to wake up and have to make payroll, to have to figure out how you're going to stretch the dollar as a business owner, how you please your customers. I'm going to fight for you as I have for the last four years. I answer my phone. I return calls. I will stand up for you at City Hall, work with my fellow colleagues to develop and change regulations as need be. But you deserve to have representation. There are so many people I learned in, in fighting to open up the fire stations that called me. They're just struggling. A lot of people, more, more people than you, you know, that are just struggling to make ends meet in our city. High taxes, high water and sewer rates. You deserve to have representation. It's not, everything can't be giveaway. Every, we can't all be happy. As they say, I can tell you, politics is a contact sport. It's like football. It really is. And it's not, it's not pretty. It really isn't. You deserve to have representation. If you vote for me, Jamie O'Hara, November 5th, you will have somebody who will stand up for you at City Hall and fight for you. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jen Holmgren, and I want to thank you all for your engagement and your interest. I want to thank you for coming. I thank the Magnolia Library for coordinating this debate, 1623 Studios, and thank you to everyone sitting up here. I am very excited that we have such a field of qualified candidates here, and I feel that this race has been one of substance, and that is something that I'm very grateful for. It's something that we are sorely lacking in this country. Something that sets me apart is that I, for the past 20-plus years, have been a health and human services professional. I'm a registered nurse. I'm a mother. My husband and I are proud to send our fourth grader to the West Parish School. I am...
I am willing to get into the weeds and take a look at some tough issues and do volumes of reading in order to help improve quality of life for everybody here. Because as good as this city has been to my husband and I, I want to make sure that it's good to you and that it's good for future generations. I want to do my daughter proud. So I, again, I'm asking for your vote on November 5th, number seven on the ballot, but hopefully, number one in your hearts. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm impressed. This was a delightful evening. We all know you all a little bit better because of the time that you spent with us tonight, and I wish you all best of luck, and thank you for doing what you're doing. Thank you all.